Good morning. Welcome to the Gadsden City Council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the all for vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham?
President.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Avery?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson is absent today. Councilwoman Minatra?
Here.
And Councilman Robinson is absent today. We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you today first to say thank you. Thank you for life, health, and strength. Thank you for the ability to do the things that you have assigned to our hands to do. We thank you for how you're blessing our city. We ask your continued blessings upon our mayor, upon our city council, upon those who work for the city, and upon our city at large. We ask that you continue to give us wisdom, give us knowledge, to lead our city to a better place to live for all citizens. And we thank you for what you've done, what you're doing, and the things that you are going to do. We pray this prayer in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee work session and council meeting held on August the 6th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of August 2nd through August 8th and August 9th through August 15th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is reserved for proclamations and commendations. Mayor, you have any today?
Not today.
All right. Well, I have someone I want to recognize. Kay Moore with Downtown Gadsden, Inc. is here this morning. Kay, would you come forward, please? Kay has some news for us that she wants to share, and we're very glad to have you, Kay.
Thank you, Councilman Back and council members for allowing me to come today. I spent last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday in Monroeville, Alabama. I was at the 11th Annual Main Street Alabama Conference. And we were, I just wanted to kind of update you, we had some special awards that we received last week. One was the Excellence in Public and Private Partnership. We worked very closely with Mario Galardo from the Walnut Gallery and with Ray Wetzel from the Gadsden Museum of Art to make Gadsden an art place, a downtown. Now, this started before the Arts Council. Now, I'm happy to have that now going too. So, that just means more art for downtown. But we did win the award for that. We won the Excellence in Promotion Award. We had in June of 2023 more than 40 cigar box guitar makers and 80, more than 80 cigar box guitars. Now, if y'all did not see that last year, or they came back again this past June at First Friday, this was a huge economic benefit because they brought hundreds and hundreds of people from all across the United States to see these homemade cigar box guitars. And they really work. I won one, and they really work. I can't play it, but if I could, they work. We also won the Excellence in Planning in Public Space. That is the kinetic wind sculpture that we have at the corner of First and Broad Street. It was done by Harry McDaniel out of Asheville, North Carolina. And again, Mario Galardo, Ray Wetzel were instrumental, put out a call to artists. I don't know how to do this kind of stuff, but they did. And so, we got that. I also want to thank Philip Williams for allowing us to put that sculpture on his property. And then, the Excellence in Historic Rehabilitation. If you notice the old rundown Texaco gas station that had been a car repair shop at the corner of Third and Locust Street for years, Kevin Edge came in and bought that and rehabbed it, and it's now the Edge Real Estate Group. And Teresa Benefield actually went to the award ceremony that night and took, accepted the award for that. They still have the old Texaco star above that. Now, all of those four awards were things that we had to submit because, and had to be judged for. We won four. A lot of cities didn't win any. So, I'm excited about that. But I do have a special award. Mayor Craig Ford, if you will come forward, please. We have an award called the Main Street Hero Award. And this is an award that I get to present, that I get to choose who gets it every year. And I just want to say, there's a sign out front, if you haven't seen it too. There's a sign out front that had it. So, the 2023 Main Street Hero Award presented by Downtown Gadsden to Mayor Craig Ford for all you've done for downtown and all you've done for the city. Because as the city goes, the downtown goes, and vice versa. So, I just want to thank you for all you've done. You get to give awards, I get to give you an award today.
All right.
Thank you. I appreciate you all very much.
Well, thank you, Kay.
I want to say something. I don't know how Kay Moore looks younger than me. And she, I won't say it again, but she used to babysit me. But Kay and I grew up together, and she has the most wonderful parents. And Mr. President, you know who they were. And a wonderful sister, too. So, Kay's like dear family friend. But Kay, I got to tell you, this picture was somewhere the other day, and somebody said, "You look like a corpse." So, I said, "Well, I don't know if that's a compliment or not." But I want to say this, coming from Kay, this is a huge award for me, and I want to thank her and thank you for what you do for DGI. Y'all, I don't think we realize how valuable Kay Moore is to us and Gadsden and what she's done for our economic development and our taxes and everything for downtown and put us on the map. And, you know, First Friday, you could hire somebody just to run First Friday, and she does First Friday and everything else also. And I will say, the light bulbs have all been replaced on the roof. So, that's a fabulous thing. But thank you, Kay, again.
Congratulations, Mayor Ford. Thank you, Kay, for all your work and all the board of Downtown Gadsden, Inc. It's, when I attend Alabama League of Municipality functions, people notice that. I get compliments, receive compliments all the time about downtown, and they always want to know, "How do you do it?" And I tell them that we have a secret. It's called Kay Moore. So, thank you so much. All right. We'll go to item number eight on our agenda. This comes under unfinished business. This is a resolution revoking business and alcoholic beverage licenses for Gaga's Bar and Grill located at 716 East Broad Street in District 2. A hearing was held on July 30th, and the resolution was tabled until today. What is the pleasure of the council?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to say to legal and to revenue, thank you. And let me just intro by saying I'm in no favor of putting our police officers in harm's way in any type of way, nor the citizens of our great city putting anyone in harm's way. Just with all the findings, unfortunately, I wasn't able to be here for the executive session. But with all the information that have come forth and recently finding out that this business is now in my district on today, I do want to make a decision, and I want to make a motion to deny this revocation with a six-month probation, excuse me, also with a zero tolerance, excuse me, and also cameras installed at Broad and Eighth Street. While this business owner has acknowledged without doubt, there's been some violations. We are all clear on that. After talking to Sergeant Intrikin and others, I want to give this business owner another opportunity to get their business in order and let this audit play out how it plays out. Thank you, Ms. President.
All right. We didn't have time for discussion. Do we have to go for a second and then have discussion?
Did someone second it?
Not yet. So, all right. So, there's been a motion to deny revoking the business and alcoholic beverage licenses for Gaga's Bar and Grill. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All right. Any discussion?
Just for clarification, I have a question. The resolution is worded to revoke the license. So, if we're denying the revocation, will you draft a resolution to the effect?
Resolution to pass.
Okay. We would just vote no, or they would vote no on this resolution to achieve that.
Councilwoman Latham?
I would like to ask a question. So, if he's, if he's, if this dies, so the resolution will be, another one will be drawn?
No, ma'am. We're just, it's just because the resolution will not pass.
Okay.
All right. Any other?
Can I add here?
Yes.
I do want to make sure this business owner is held responsible and understand the seriousness of these allegations, all those, including from the revenue department, and we have read all the emails, seen the reports, spoken to Sergeant Intrikin. And, you know, I want to just make sure that they understand the seriousness of this. That's why we're asking for probation with a zero tolerance, and also a camera be installed near their location so that we can have more documentation than what we have. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to ask for a roll call vote. Please, ma'am.
Councilwoman Latham?
I want to make sure what I'm voting on.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm voting to, the resolution as it stands now, right?
Well, he's, Councilman Smith does not want to revoke the business license.
Yeah, the resolution is worded to revoke, so a no vote would be to let the business continue, basically.
Councilman Smith?
No.
Councilman Avery?
No.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Minatra?
Yes.
All right. The motion to adopt the resolution does fail to carry.
Okay.
So, the resolution is not adopted.
Thank you. All right. Item nine is a resolution appointing and reappointing members to CED Mental Health Board. This appoints Craig Scott for a term expiring April 1st, 2025, and Elisa Dixon for a term expiring April 1st, 2029. It reappoints Emily Mills for a term expiring April 1st, 2027. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution authorizing use of the Memorial Bridge, also known as Broad Street Bridge, for Sunset Sips. This authorizes Downtown Gadsden, Inc. use of the Memorial Bridge for the Sunset Sips event taking place on October 15th. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move. Second.
Is there any discussion? Just want to point out, this is another event that DGI does and that Kay puts on. Thank you so much. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing acceptance and administration of ADM grant. This is for acceptance and administration of a grant through the Alabama Department of Environmental Management Recycling Program. The amount is $67,323, and the funds will be used to purchase recycling trailers. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
So, currently, we have 50 trailers that are disseminated throughout the city that collect cardboard, and this will add another 17 trailers. We have more requests than we have trailers. We've also had other cities request our trailers that will go put into their city, like City Vitala, and they're putting their cardboard in our trailers, and we're picking them up to bring back in our area, which not only helps the City Vitala, helps City of Gadsden generate revenue, but it also helps us as part of our plan of cleaning up Gadsden.
I think they are needed. I know I've had people ask me about them, so glad to get the new ones. All right. Any other comments? All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is a resolution accepting conveyance of property located at 103 Gould Street. This clears up records for property that was purchased in 2020 by the Gadsden Commercial Development Authority and donated to the city. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is a resolution authorizing agreement with the EE Group Incorporated. This is for electrical plans and specifications to light nine holes at the Twin Bridges Golf Course, and the amount is $270,000. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Some move. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is a, this is a big item here, and we're excited about this. We were going to be one of the only golf courses in the state that offers night golf. So, if you like loud music and playing golf at night and having an adult beverage, get ready because we're coming.
I think this is going to be outstanding. It's, I've talked with a few friends that play golf, and they can't wait. And I think as Councilman Wilson pointed out a couple of weeks ago, this will, it pairs very well with Robert Trent Jones Trail, Silver Lakes. They have 27 holes, so this will add a ninth, I mean, nine holes, which will make it two 18-hole rounds for the, for the trip for the guys and girls that come to play our course out at Silver Lakes. So, uh...
So, we've already started booking events, and we don't even have it. So, they've already started calling one to book corporate events at night and et cetera. So, this is going to help generate revenue for the golf course. So, this is fantastic.
Outstanding. All right. Any more discussion? If not, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 comes under first readings. This is an ordinance creating an entertainment district in the area between South Fourth Street and Rainbow Drive from Morana Avenue south to I-759, and then an area behind, or between, rather, Rainbow Drive and the Couso River, from the Boardwalk south to River Road. The beverages must be purchased from businesses licensed for on-premise sales inside the district and be in a paper or plastic cup no larger than 16 ounces, specifically marked with the business's name or logo. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
If I can mention that, that is, that goes in line with our riverfront development master plan that Shamless and King is actually the architect of and drawing. We have, it's a piece of legislation that I passed while I was in the legislature a while back, and I actually called Kay Moore the day that it was on the floor, and she was very pro piece of legislation on this. This will be our second riverfront development district. But this is fantastic. It'll incorporate Chili's, Olive Garden, Longhorn, the new restaurant behind Gadsden Mall, and also the new development that we're going to be coming to the council with here shortly. Those plans should be finalized in November, and we have big news and a big announcement to make on that. It's the land behind Arby's. So, this is, this is going to be really good for the economy. You won't recognize Gadsden on that part, and I'm telling you, this is huge.
Wow. That's great. Any other comments?
As Donald Trump would say. This is huge. Look at him. I am not Donald Trump. I pay my bills up.
Did you mention in pre-council that you needed it today? We might consider...
Need this one today? All right. Does anyone have any opposition to bringing this up today?
I don't.
No? Someone like to, we would have to suspend the rules?
You would need a motion and second to vote to suspend the rules.
So, is there a motion to bring this up today?
I make a motion that we suspend the rules and marine drugs, 2024, 647.
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today at its first reading, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent to consider.
All right. Move to adopt.
Yeah.
All right. So, we've got to move to adopt.
I make a motion that we move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. All right. Item 15, under first readings, is an ordinance establishing the Gadsden City Youth Council. This board will have eight members from 14 to 18 years of age nominated by the mayor and approved by the council. The purpose is evaluating and reviewing issues facing youth in the city to aid in planning assistance for youth activities and to develop a youth master plan to benefit young people in the city. Members will serve one academic year beginning annually in August. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Mayor, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. This is something that Brett Johnson has orchestrated and something we talked about the last time we were at NCSL, and we were thinking the same thing, and we texted each other about the same time. So, I think it'll be good for all of us to help communicate with our future leaders.
Sure. All right. Item 16 is a ordinance establishing the mayor's Young Professional Advisory Council. This board's membership will consist of seven to 12 Etowah County residents, with the majority being Gadsden residents eligible to vote in the City of Gadsden municipal elections. The board's purpose is evaluating and proposing solutions to issues faced by young professionals, parents, and families. Members will serve two-year terms beginning October the 1st. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week.
This is a little different than the other one, but it's also the same tone of bringing in our future leaders and communicating with them with the council and the mayor.
Great. I think that's wonderful. All right. Item 17 is for new business. I believe we have three items today. We'll start with Councilwoman Latham.
Thank you. Thank you, President Back. I am asking for, to suspend the rules for consideration of 2024, 660, Resolution Authorizing Agreement with Them Dirty Roses LLC to perform at the AMP on September 19th, 2024.
All right. So, is there a, a second?
Second.
Got a second? All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Thank you. I make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Latham. Thank you. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to suspend the rules today to consider Resolution Authorizing Acquisition of Real Property for Public Purpose, and this is property that we are trying to acquire for the purpose of having a City Hall annex building.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt. Abstaining. We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilwoman Minatra?
Yes, Mr. President. I make a motion that we suspend the rules and consider under new business number 670, which is requested by the Engineering Department. It's regarding the 2024 City of Gadsden Street resurfacing project. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted. Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. I believe that's all we have in new business today. So, we will move to item 18, department reports, committees, and boards. I believe we have coming today the Finance Department.
Good morning, council. We have our audit report issued for FY '23, so I just wanted to present a copy of that to you guys. I'm going to hit the highlights of this thing. I did this several years ago, and I know it's very easy to get deep into it and glaze over and get really bored with all the intricacies of this, but I just wanted to hit a couple of highlights on our '23 audit report. And also say, with myself getting my feet under me this year, this report is coming to you a little bit later than it normally would, obviously, but we're on track to get back on to where we would normally present this in around March or April. So, this is coming to you now along with our budget preparations, and also this year's been a little bit different. But I just want to draw your attention to the report itself. The main point that you want to look at in the audit report is that second paragraph on page one, which essentially tells you that you have a clean audit. You can get, it's going to tell you that all material respects of this report are good. There are no material misstatements in this report, and that just, basically, that's standard wordage that's going to tell you that you have a clean audit. You can go through the rest of that. There's a lot of accounting jargon in there that has to be put in there. I don't mean to diminish this report, but that is the main point that we want to focus on. You know, if you had an issue, you had a material misstatement, you had something that they, they found to the contrary, they would put it in here, but we do not have that in this audit report. As you go through this audit report, you can see our different funds on page seven is going to break that down. I just wanted to point out that, and we were tracking this, too. We had a good year in '23, about $6.5 million net change in fund balance there. And you can see our capital improvements funds and the different, different major funds there that also did well. And I just wanted to point out one other thing. We've talked about this a little bit in the budget talks, but specifically to the garbage department, or the garbage fund, rather, this is a fund that we've historically had to supplement quite a bit, and with our garbage rate changes, we were already seeing the, reaping the benefits of that, obviously, in '23, and it's just going to continue to be even better than that in '24, which will allow us to do some things in this budget that we would normally have to do from our general fund. So, again, I know that's a very quick rundown of that, but we could spend a whole lot of time diving in, and obviously, once you guys have had a chance to look over this report and come back with any questions, if I can't answer those questions for you, hopefully I can, but I will absolutely get with our auditors and follow up with you and get you answers on those. So, if you have any questions?
Mr. President, I just want to, I want to thank Brandon and Gina, who's here with the Finance Department, not Angie, Gina. And, but we want to thank them for what they did. It was a lot, especially after we lost a finance director so many years, and this was Brandon's first time to do the audit. He did a great job, and we want to thank them for what they did, and to have a good audit again and continuing the success is a good thing. So, thank you, Brandon.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Thank you, Brandon. Any questions from the council?
And like I said, I know you guys were just getting this, but I was presenting it to you guys. Once you've had a chance to look over it, just let us know, and we can answer any questions for you.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you. Are there any other department reports today? All right, we do, we do have one citizen request to speak. We're very pleased to have Lynn Curry, Executive Director of Darden Rehabilitation Foundation. Lynn, welcome to the city council meeting. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much for having me, mayor and councilman, and I really appreciate it. I am the Director at Darden Rehabilitation, and I was going to tell you a little bit about what we do. We provide community employment services to people with disabilities, and so no matter what kind of disability a person has, they can still work, and, you know, most people want a purpose and they want a reason to work. So, we provide all kinds of services to those folks. We can start working with people at age 16 until. We still have some 70, 75-year-old folks that come through our doors that still need help going to work. We do provide our services in five counties, Etowah County, Cherokee, DeKalb, Marshall, and St. Clair Counties, and we get all of our referrals from the Alabama Department of Rehab Services. But whatever the needs are of our individuals as far as going to work, if they need, they don't know how to do an application, they don't know how to do a resume, they don't have their proper IDs to go to work, they don't have a driver's license, that's another thing that we are very proud of. We teach driver's education to, to many of our consumers who have, maybe have taken the course when they were in high school but never, you know, carried through of getting their license, so we are bettering people's lives, and, but the main reason I'm here today is we are so proud, we are finally in a new location, and we're having our building dedication and ribbon cutting next Friday morning at 9:00. We're located on 708 South Fourth Street, and we would love for all of you to come by and check us out, and, you know, Darden has, we have been in business since 1957. We were founded by Mr. E.L. Darden, and we were located on the campus of Gadsden State Community College for 65 years, and then we have moved twice in the last 11 months, so we are so thrilled to have such a nice place and to be located in the city. I told President Beck, we get, we're noticed a whole lot more, we're getting a whole lot of people coming in and saying, hey, what do y'all do here? So, we're in a great place, and we're so proud to be in the city, and it kept our, you know, our people working here, so thank you so much for allowing me this time, and I hope you can all join us next Friday at 9:00.
Lynn, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Years ago, I've had the honor and pleasure of serving on the Darden Board.
Yes.
I think you came during my three-year term, and, and I learned firsthand what a wonderful institution Darden Rehabilitation Services is. It provides a great service for our community and for our community members, and, and it also helps businesses. I mean, there's contracts you have with local manufacturing companies where piecework, I think, is, we would call it being done.
We did at our old location, you know, since we've moved, we, we don't have as, as much space, but we did when we were housed at, at Gadsden State, but yes, we worked with a lot of local companies, and so that was...
So, you're not able to do that anymore with, without that, with your space? I didn't realize that.
Right.
Well, heck.
I know, I know. We, we do miss that.
But you are, you still provide great employment opportunities.
Yes, yeah. That's our goal, is get them to work, get them in a job that they can be successful in and be, you know, be a, a productive citizen, you know.
I do remember many of the employers were always asking for more employees that come from Darden because of the training they receive from, from you guys before they go to work, and, and even on-the-job training while they're still at work, you're, you're shadowing them.
Definitely. We follow them on the jobs, yes.
Well, thank you for what you do.
Okay, thank y'all.
All right, thanks.
Mr. President, I want to thank Darden, and I had a long relationship with them back in the day with the legislature, but does Todd still work?
He, he is not able to work anymore.
Boy, he was fantastic.
He was fantastic. He is actually in the Itala Nursing Home.
Well, please tell him I say hello.
I will, I will.
He was a good friend, but thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Lynn. All right, we'll move to item 20 on our agenda, which is remarks by mayor and council. Mayor Ford?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President, members of council. The airport is having its first annual fly-in on September 21st from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We're going to have a specialty aircraft, a flight simulator, bounce houses, and food trucks, so it's a big day. We want to thank our airport director and Brett for putting this on. We are exposing more at the airport, and we have some new improvements with signage out there we'd love for you to see also. We're currently renting kayak rentals. This is something John Moore and the Bait Shack has, is it called the Bait Shack or the Landing, Coussa Landing? I call it, I don't know why I call it the Bait Shack. I don't know. So, they have female minas over there, we know that, so, but, but we have kayak rentals over there with our paddle boats now. They're available at Coussa Landing. There's a self-serve kiosk. Southside has something similar, if you've ever wanted to ride the kayaks out there, you do your app, your application on your phone, it's $20 for two hours and $10 for every hour thereafter, so we are less expensive than our neighboring city, so if you want to ride a kayak, come on to Gadsden. I want to tell you something that's coming up at the AMP that is a blast, that I did one time. If you ever want to see me dance, you come here, because I'll dance. It's a silent disco. It's going to be at the venue September the 12th. It's a dinner and a dance, and the information's on our website. It's, it's something, it's a sight to behold, just to be honest, where you walk in a room, and it's totally quiet, and you see a bunch of people with headphones on dancing with each other. So, there's a DJ, a local DJ, and you can pick which genre of music you want to listen to, and then you're sitting there while Councilwoman Latham's dancing with Heath. Heath may be listening to Van Halen, and Councilwoman Latham may be listening to James Taylor, we don't know. So, but they're dancing, you know, and it's just, it's a blast. It's a lot of fun, it's good, clean fun, so I hope everybody will attend. It's something that I asked them to bring, because I experienced it when I was out of town one time, and I said, this is, we got to have this in Gadsden, so September the 12th at the venue, so thank you.
That's great, thanks, Mayor Ford. Councilwoman Latham, tell us about that dancing with, with James Taylor, yeah, that's right.
I have no remarks.
No remarks, all right, thank you, ma'am. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say thank you to Mayor Ford for your leadership, the council and all the department heads and all that you do. I'm still excited about all that's going on in the City of Gadsden. Going to keep Gadsden first and continue to grow Gadsden, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Avery?
Mr. President, so we was absent last weekend, so in lieu of that, I, um, didn't really receive the news in time, but we, here in this council chambers, honored two members that turned 103 years old, and sadly to say, one of those members have deceased on us, and that's Mr. Lonzie Gray, and so I do want to publicly make it known from this seat to the Gray family, my condolences to you continuously, as we continue to pray for your strength, and, and to his sister that still is alive, we, we pray, you know, your healing, and, and, and just remembering those memories for that long and still here with us, so we, we will love on you forevermore. Basically, to all those, also, on that note, to all of those grieving families throughout our city and our county. With that, also, I wanted to continue to just highlight, I was asked to highlight with speed in the school zones. I'll mention just this with Tuscaloosa Avenue and Henry Street. Henry Street is pretty difficult, but I guess they're having a little problems there, maybe at Head Start, because there are speed bumps on Henry Street, so please slow down, even if your child is late to school, just slow down, still get them there, you know, just kind of try to wake up early. But for all those that are just riding through, please watch your speed, for those that are taking, because some people do park across the street to walk their kids over to, to the school, so please watch your speed and be careful. And finally, I want to wish two of my boys, well, two of my only boys, rather, a happy birthday, and that's Cam and Matthias, as they are truly making the reason why I can't grow hair in the top portion of my head as they get older. Wish them best of luck and wishing them many, many more birthdays. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Avery?
Councilwoman Minatra?
Um, I just want to give a shout out to Back to School. I attended my first open house at Walnut Park Elementary yesterday afternoon, and I just want to say a big thank you to all that they do. They were pretty excited that all of their students in the third grade were promoted to the fourth grade after passing the reading test and math. That, that was our first year to score students, so excited for them and thankful for those teachers.
Thank you. All right. I just wanted to make note that this Thursday night kicks off the high school football season for Gadsden City High School.[1727.33]